Oh, yeah. I gave up on that. Especially in the apartment.
What did you say?
I gave up.
How did you do it this way?
I won you off. It's kinda sad that we haven't. I'm glad if you want to stay.
Yeah, all the other tenants.
Oh, yeah. Clearly, you don't work for the city. Busy this week.
She's here in town. You were talking to Tom Lerner about that.
Yeah.
But listen, I...
You're a sketchup or something.
Yeah. Really? Exactly. Oh, my goodness.
There's a good one there.
Scooting in yet again.
You wanted to sit down there.
I know, but no one...
Sounds like there's a good one in there. We didn't even...
That's not good. We didn't even make... They had enough interest that we didn't make it here. Yeah, 'cause real estate's bananas right now. And nobody's listed as a... They should go and have more.
Yeah. Yeah. Real estate's bananas. Boss bananas.
My place still isn't worth anything.
'Cause every place else in Evanston is like 100,000 more than it was last year.
Our neighborhood sucks. I mean, it's amazing.
It's crazy.
It's ridiculous that ours are so under-valued.
'Cause I can't find anything to buy. Can't afford anything anymore. Certainly gonna board your house and finish it.
To be able to flip it.
It's under 300. Say, "Yeah, I do under 300." Yeah. My guess is you got upwards of 5. 6? You're getting a 6? But upwards of 5 not finished?
That is pretty funny. Well, there it is. You know. One full bath and one half-bath.
Yeah, but your outside's all bath. Your curb appeal sold the house.
You get the whole bath?
Just saying.
It has one full bath and one half-bath that's done except for the...
Your curb appeal and your location in Dewey sold your house. You got curb appeal. It looks really nice.
His new job is...
Just done with it? Oh, my God. There's gotta be something there. I know. I want pins and needles.
All right, everyone, I think we're gonna get settled here and get started tonight. Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we'll either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Matthew Rogers, Beth McLennan, and Andrew Gallimore. We therefore have a quorum. Also present here tonight from city staff is Melissa Clots. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding a matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we will hear first from the staff and the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably questioned witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name is printed on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at a microphone so your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations.
First up on the agenda tonight is approval of the meeting minutes from our June 18th meeting. Were there any comments or corrections regarding those minutes?
I have one, which is on the 1108 Grant Street. The third paragraph, the second sentence, the "she" should be Chairman Summers. I did not say that sentence.
Sorry, which page did you say?
Sorry, it's in 1108 Grant, third paragraph, second sentence. The pronoun "she" should refer to Chairman Summers, not me.
I don't know that that's what I said either, but...
You did.
And more space is generally desired? The last part there?
Oh, you might not have said that.
I wouldn't have said that.
But you made the clarification that you liked that the porch had some relationship to the dormer.
Well, I would've made that point, but I wouldn't have made the last part about generally more space is generally desired.
Do you want the second half of the sentence?
Yeah, maybe that part, yeah. That doesn't...
Yeah, that doesn't really sound like you.
That does. I was like, that's why I stopped, 'cause like, 'cause I go through, but I pay more attention when it's like something I supposedly said, and so I... Anyways, that's why I didn't catch that earlier, but I was like, I didn't say more space, so... Okay. With that, was there anything else? Is there a motion?
I move that our meeting minutes for the Zoning Board of Appeals of Tuesday, June 18th, 2013, be adopted with the one change that has been noted.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Yes, I will note that members McLennan and Gallimore were not present at that meeting. Therefore, seeing, however, the present members have approved the minutes, and those will carry forward. Our next order of business this evening is new business at 1620 Sherman Avenue. And if you could read that in, Melissa, when you're ready.
This application will actually not be heard tonight. Inaccurate application materials were submitted, so the case will be re-noticed and heard in August.
All right. And we have 2335 Hartree Avenue.
John Leonard, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a second-story addition and replace a one-car detached garage with a two-car detached garage. The applicant requests a side yard setback of 2.9 feet where five feet is required, zoning code section 6828A3. Building lot coverage of 38.1% where a maximum 30% is allowed, zoning code section 6827. An impervious surface coverage of 48% where a maximum 45% is allowed, zoning code section 68210A. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted June 4th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated October 20th, 2008, site plans, elevation, images of neighboring properties submitted by the applicant, aerial map, zoning map of property, image of property, and Spark meeting minutes of June 19th, 2013.
Okay, and if I could swear on anyone who's just to speak to us regarding this matter at this time? Do you swear for him to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Okay, thank you. And if we could have the applicant come forward? And if you could state your name and address for us for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Fred Wilson from Aggantewilson Architects. Our office is located at 2834 Central Street in Evanston. This is John Potter from my office. He's an associate principal, and the homeowner is Tim Flatland. So, let's start with the site plan, John. There we go. So, the main issue that we have here is that we are on a substandard lot. It's a narrow lot in the neighborhood. It's a 33-foot by 150-foot lot, which gives us a square footage of 4950 for the square footage for the calculations for everything to occur from. A typical lot in this area is 7,200 square feet, so it kinda gives you a sense of how far under we are in terms of the mathematics. What we've been working with, the zoning group, and trying to figure out is the, trying to kinda work with the spirit of the minor variation idea, which kinda goes up to the maximum of 35%. We are just under a 30% request, and 400 square feet of it is for our garage. Currently, there's a one-car garage, not even really a one-car. It's 10-foot on the outside dimension right now, so it's pretty hard to get a car in here. So, one of our obvious improvements is to create a two-car, 400-square-foot garage. And the other is, again, with the sort of spirit of the law, we do not qualify for this front porch to actually obtain the 50% bonus because it's not open on three sides. It's only open on two sides. So, what we're asking is that if we can increase by the 517 square feet that we're requiring for our building lot coverage, of which we're feeling the majority, obviously, is for the 400 feet for a two-car garage, and then the porch up on the front. The lot coverage, we are requesting 148 feet for the lot coverage, impervious, in addition to what we're required. And what we did with Sparks is actually all the concrete that is on the entire property, we are, this is existing, all of this concrete we've removed completely and are putting it in with pervious paving material so that we're trying to limit what that is. The other thing is the walk that is to our north that is continuous all along, we're actually gonna be removing that and then flipping our walkway to the south side of the project where our larger setback already occurs, so that we're able to still get drainage between our neighboring property and our property on the outside of the walkway, and then we're gonna be able to then maintain a swale up on the north end of our property so we can get drainage to work its way to the back and to the front, and then remove all of this impervious entirely. Then the last request, I have that one, John. We're actually, we're gonna be adding a second story up on top of the structure. It's a one-story bungalow right now, and what we would like to do then is, on the north side, is maintain our wall at nominally three feet. We're gonna step it back for architectural an inch. It's more or less 2'11", or 2.9 is what we're asking for, but we will be stepping it back just for the building code. And our idea there is, obviously, the family is growing, and we need to put bedrooms. Right now, it's a two-bedroom house, so we want to allow them to raise their kids and
Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address and be sure that your name is printed on the sign up sheet at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at a microphone so your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all of the testimony, other evidence and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations.
First up on the agenda tonight is approval of the meeting minutes from our June 18th meeting. Were there any comments or corrections regarding those minutes?
I have one, which is on the 1108 Grant Street, the third paragraph, the second sentence, the she should be Chairman Summers. I did not say that sentence.
Sorry, which page did you say?
Sorry, it's in 1108 Grant, third paragraph, second sentence. The pronoun she should refer to Chairman Summers, not me.
I don't know that that's what I said either, but...
You did.
And more space is generally desired? The last part there?
Oh, you might not have said that.
I wouldn't have said that.
But you made the clarification that you liked that the porch had some relationship to the dormer.
Well, I would have made that point, but I wouldn't have made the last part about generally more space is generally desired.
Do you want the second half of the sentence?
Yeah, maybe that part, yeah. That doesn't...
Yeah, that doesn't really sound like you.
That does. I was like, that's why I stopped, because like, because I go through with it, I pay more attention when it's like something I supposedly said, and so I... Anyways, that's why I didn't catch that earlier, but I was like, I didn't say more space, so... Okay. With that, was there anything else? Is there a motion?
I move that our meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals of Tuesday, June 18th, 2013, be adopted with the one change that has been noted.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Yes, I will note that members McKinnon and Gallimore were not present at that meeting. Therefore, seeing however, the present members have approved the minutes and those will carry forward. Our next order of business this evening is new business at 1620 Sherman Avenue. And if you could read that in, Melissa, when you're ready.
This application will actually not be heard tonight. Inaccurate application materials were submitted, so the case will be re-noticed and heard in August.
And we have 2335 Hartree Avenue.
John Leonard, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a second story addition and replace a one car detached garage with a two car detached garage. The applicant requests a side yard setback of 2.9 feet where five feet is required, zoning code section 6828A3, building lot coverage of 38.1% where a maximum 30% is allowed, zoning code section 6827, and impervious surface coverage of 48% where a maximum 45% is allowed, zoning code section 68210A. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted June 4th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated October 20th, 2008, site plans, elevation, images of neighboring properties submitted by the applicant, aerial map, zoning map of property, image of property, and spark meeting minutes of June 19th, 2013.
Okay, and if I could swear in anyone who's just to speak to us regarding this matter at this time? Do you swear for him to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Okay, thank you. And if we could have the applicant come forward? And if you could state your name and address for us for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Fred Wilson from Aggantewilson Architects. Our office is located at 2834 Central Street in Evanston. This is John Potter from my office. He's an associate principal, and the homeowner is Tim Flatland. So, let's start with the site plan, John. So, the main issue that we have here is that we are on a substandard lot. It's a narrow lot in the neighborhood. It's a 33 foot by 150 foot lot, which gives us a square footage of 4950 for the square footage for the calculations for everything to occur from. A typical lot in this area is 7,200 square feet, so it kind of gives you a sense of how far under we are in terms of the mathematics. What we've been working with the zoning group and trying to figure out is the, trying to kind of work with the spirit of the minor variation idea, which kind of goes up to the maximum of 35%. We are just under a 30% request, and 400 square feet of it is for our garage. Currently, there's a one car garage, not even really a one car. It's 10 foot on the outside dimension right now, so it's pretty hard to get a car in here. So, one of our obvious improvements is to create a two car, 400 square foot garage. And the other is, again, with the sort of spirit of the law, we do not qualify for this front porch to actually obtain the 50% bonus, because it's not open on three sides, it's only open on two sides. So, what we're asking is that if we can increase by the 517 square feet that we're requiring for our building lot coverage, of which we're feeling the majority obviously is for the 400 feet for a two car garage, and then the porch up on the front. The lot coverage, we are requesting 148 feet for the lot coverage, impervious, in addition to what we're required. And what we did with Sparks is actually all the concrete that is on the entire property, we are, this is existing, all of this concrete we've removed completely and are putting it in with pervious paving material, so that we're trying to limit what that is. The other thing is the walk that is to our north, that is continuous all along, we're actually going to be removing that and then flipping our walkway to the south side of the project where our larger setback already occurs, so that we're able to still get drainage between our neighboring property and our property on the outside of the walkway, and then we're going to be able to then maintain a swale up on the north end of our property so we can get drainage to work its way to the back and to the front, and then remove all of this impervious entirely. Then the last request, we're actually, we're going to be adding a second story up on top of the structure. It's a one story bungalow right now, and what we would like to do then is, on the north side, is maintain our wall at nominally three feet. We're going to step it back for architectural an inch. It's more or less two foot 11 is, or 2.9 is what we're asking for, but we will be stepping it back just for the building code. And our idea there is obviously the family is growing and we need to put bedrooms, right now it's a two bedroom house, so we want to allow them to raise their kids and such. We also brought some images. This is some other work that we've done where we've actually added second stories. So, we're bringing the belt course similar to like this project where then the addition is up on top. The same thing here where, again, that piece was added on and the piece was added on here. So, the idea is to make it look like we were never here, so that it actually was always a two story structure. So, Tim, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Tim Flatland, 2335 Hartree. Yeah, you know, we've absolutely fallen in love with this neighborhood. We had, we brought one child in with us to this house, and it worked okay, right? But now that we've had a second and planning on a third, is when we really, really wanted to try to stay in the neighborhood. So, that's what we were trying to do.
Do you have any questions for us?
I think we kind of glossed over the fact that we're also doing an addition to the back of the house as part of this, and...
Yeah, this is along the back here. This is a one story current mudroom that we have here. We're going to take that off, and then where that little corner is right here, that's this corner here. So, where the addition is, we did step that back to conform, and we're doing a two story addition that fills in where this section is right here, right in through there.
So, I guess my comment to you, which you may want to allude further on then, would be the square footage with respect to, say, the porch or the garage is more understandable from a hardship standpoint, but the square footage with respect to the back of the house is, we need for more feedback on.
In terms of why we're...
Yeah.
Yeah, sort of specifically, why is that the minimum necessary? That's always an issue particularly for me, is why is it the minimum change necessary? And it seems to me that with a property of this size and a house of this size, that you can get all the needs of the family met without having to go over that building lot coverage by 8.1%.
Well, you mean, in terms of, right now, we're actually, without doing the garage or anything, we're essentially at the limit. We're at 28% right now. So, we really can't, we need relief at some level. We're at...
That's why I said, you know, I think it's a little bit more straightforward when we talk about the garage, you know, being kind of a stand, being a standard two car garage size and having the standard expectation on a lot of, in this district of, you know, space parking for two cars, like that's, you know, one of the goals of the zoning ordinance is, and one of the expectations of the zoning ordinance is that you'd be able to park two cars on this lot.
Right, understand.
So, that rationale and hardship is kind of fairly straightforward.
Right.
And clarify for me, Melissa, or maybe you can, is it 100% reduction on the lot coverage for, if it was an open three sided porch?
If the front porch was located entirely in front of the front facade of the house, it would receive a 50% building lot coverage, which would then also affect the impervious surface.
Okay. I mean, I think, you know, working within the confines of the existing house, I can also understand, you know, some of that, like that extra, you know, I can, so I can sort of understand that, too.
Would the number then...
But now, but where I think the understanding drops off at this point is the hardship that goes between adding, you know, say, the garage and stuff, and the actual number that you're asking for, which is primarily all the space that you're adding in the back.
So, would the, would the number that you'd be looking for be 450 square feet? Essentially, the 400 foot?
I haven't done all the math, so I don't really know what...
Well, the 400.
I don't know, I don't know what that number is. Whatever the number...
Well, the porch is approximately 100 square feet, and so 50% of that is, is, you know, would be the 50, and then if the garage was the 400, I mean, because we...
I mean, obviously, you technically need the extra 50. You know, you need the, technically according to the ordinance, you need the full 100. And if you say the garage is another 400, so that's 500, but you're under, you're still under by a certain percentage. So, I don't really know what that puts us above 30%, but...
Is that the total?
Whatever that puts us at, we need to understand the hardship to go from that number to 38.
So, I think I understand what you're saying. I'm John Potter. The current, the current square footage of the house, including the mudroom addition on the back, with the one car garage, would be at the 1485, I'm sorry, the 1,377 square feet. If there was an, if the board agreed and we were allowed to increase it by 100 square feet for the garage, and an additional 212 square feet for the second car, that would bring our total to 1,800 square feet. Does that make sense?
No. No.
In other words, I think what you were asking is what would, what would be the square footage for just the second car, the garage, and for the porch?
But that's the mudroom, too.
I don't actually, at this moment, I don't actually care what the precise numbers are. All I'm saying is that conceptually speaking, I understand our goal from a zoning perspective to get the two cars.
Right.
I understand our goal from a zoning perspective, also to support the front porch and the architecture, and the fact that you sort of already have an L that we're working with, which doesn't necessarily meet the letter of the law of the zoning ordinance. I think it still meets the intent, you know, the spirit.
Right.
So, now, so that, and I get that that probably puts us over 30% by X amount. Say for sake of argument, it's 2%. I don't know what it is. What is my hardship rationale, understanding for why you need the extra 6% to get to 38%?
So, talk about what the addition, like, what's the addition going to give the family? Like, talk about what rooms are going to be added, you know what I mean? Tell us what's going on in the addition.
So, what we have right here, what we did is we, we left the front little sunroom here, in terms of the front, and then we left the, there's a room up here right now that is the living room, so we're going to make that into the dining room. And then we are not doing a living room at all. So, what we're going to do then is have the kitchen here with a breakfast area in through here, I don't know if you can see, and then we did the family room in the back. So, it's not like we're, you know, we're not adding any kind of fluff space, if you will, like a library or anything like that. Then along this side here, we actually have then a back powder room, and then our mudroom kind of works in the back corner here with the closet and hooks, and then there's a front closet up and through the front here. So, this little notch right here, you can see is the, is the cutoff point where that addition is. There is a little, you know, one story mudroom currently right now that we were going to be removing, so we'd be removing that piece to then build this piece back on, in terms of that. So, you know, again, it just, it's been very difficult to try and get really three room, you know, the three rooms, because these are already pretty narrow, to get a kitchen and then the family room onto here.
And then what happens upstairs?
Upstairs, we're trying to get four bedrooms that are happening up here. So, budget wise, we're trying to figure out whether we're holding this back into here and trying to get four, really three bedrooms right now, and then a smaller one that's here that could be a fourth bedroom. So, whether we pull that back, we're trying to work on that with budget, but that would line up, whether that comes here or whether it comes all the way out, you know, onto the, onto the space. We're working on our budget with that right now.
So, do you, do you have a different second floor plan than we have? Because we have a second floor plan that has a giant master suite.
The one you have is the, it's lined up, yeah, which is the way it's proposed right now, on yours.
Can we see that? Can we see that, Pam?
Yeah. So, you're proposing to actually step the second floor back?
Sounds like...
We're proposing that as far as a...
If you're not going to get that mic, I need you on it.
We're proposing that as a, as a budget cut, because we're over budget right now.
Sure, who isn't?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And why the full bath on the first floor? Why not just a powder?
They have a dog. They have a dog, so that they, they want to use that as a dog wash. That's why it's a shower. But you can see, it's actually pretty modest in terms of the size of the rooms and what we're trying to do.
Can I ask a question about the, the second floor aligning over the first floor? So, you said you're stepping it back. Is that because the first floor, does the first floor have existing, is it an existing brick veneer?
The lower part is.
Are you guys adding it? Oh, it is. Okay, so you're going to take it down from the eaves, down to the water table, and then above that is just...
Stucco.
Right, so that's how you're picking up the couple inches?
Yeah.
So, the inside walls all aligned?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
No, I'm good, thanks.
Oh, did you want to see that?
So, sorry, I got another question. So, if we go back to that family room, what's the, what are the overall dimensions of that family room? Ish? Is it like 16 by 15?
Yeah, it's probably a good guess, yeah.
Ish?
Yeah, yeah.
And, sorry, Melissa, you know, you know these numbers because you know...
Very good, it's 16 by 15.
Because you always know numbers. At 38.1, so the 8.1% that we're over on building lot coverage, is that, what square footage is that?
That's what I was just, we need to, that's what we need to get to.
No, what's the difference between 30 and 38.1?
517.
517 square feet.
Yeah. And that's what, I mean, that, the, what I was kind of trying to allude to earlier is that if 400 of that goes to our garage, and 50 of it goes toward our open porch, that we're not getting the bonus for the spirit of it, and we, and I'm just trying to arrive at it as a rational number, that if we have to cut back, you know, a couple feet on the back of the addition, or something like that to, to make that work. I mean, if you said to us, if you limit it to 450 feet, for example, then that's what we would do.
Right, so it seems like there's an opportunity that, that it wouldn't be a terrible thing for the plan if you could cut, say, like, two feet off the back.
Right, right.
So, there is room for compromise, in your opinion?
For sure.
Okay.
And again, like I mentioned, it will help us with our budget. I mean, we're trying to cut back.
So, you're not...
We're, we're, literally, you know...
Anyway, we can help you on the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you've got good detailing on it, so...
All right, so let's, now, now maybe we can try to get to the numbers then, so that we can understand here a little bit more.
While they're calculating, I'm a little curious about the front porch. When you say it's open on either side, does that mean that it's just operable windows? Or does it mean that it's...
This, this little front porch is enclosed, so that we've already calculated. What we're talking about is this front porch.
Oh.
So, this is open here and here, but because we're not open on three sides, we don't qualify.
I see.
So, this, and we really thought this would be, the neighborhood is definitely a front yard neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, we really felt like to have a few chairs out here, to be able to sit out there as a nice, right now, it just has a little stoop. So, this is where we were, you know, again, we're adding, but we think it's a, it's an important piece.
Right, because, and so it's not getting the, the extra room because the sunroom abuts it on the north side.
Yeah, and this is a pretty cool little, little sunroom porch that we want to keep. It's got a, and then that kind of works with the other context, with the other buildings.
Sure, okay, all right.
Is there a way to tighten up the size of that front porch?
The front porch here?
Yeah, the new front porch? Again, just from that whole building lot coverage perspective?
I mean, maybe a foot, you know, here where this is, where that railing is, but I mean, you know, that, this is really the hangout area.
Yep.
I mean, that's...
They're using the same roof line, right?
Yeah, and we did run that under the same roof line, you know, here, that we thought that was a nice look. But that, that area is like eight and a half by...
Oh, so there's just a line missing in elevation?
It's like eight and a half by six. And then what we did on the elevation is we, we thought what would be cool is that, you know, we wrapped the windows around this, the front, and then that front porch, sorry, the front sunroom sits here, and then the, but the cornice line runs all the way across.
So, this line is missing.
Yeah, so, so in the elevation, it's missing a line, right? Because it shows that that whole front is in the same plane.
This, no, it's, what it does is the roof line is in the same plane.
Water table, at the water table, yeah.
Yeah, like this vertical line is missing, is what she was trying to say.
To be clear, on what your intention is.
Yes, this line, there would be a line right here.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah, where that jogs back. You guys are tough.
I'm trying to figure out how wide your back addition is. Where? Oh, here, just, sorry. 22 and a half, let's say, okay.
Yeah, it's 22 and a half feet.
Oh, did you do it already?
Yeah, I mean, that's right, right, right up to 100 correctly.
John, do you have a calculator?
Take 67.
Yeah, two, two and a half.
67 divided by 22 and a half. How much? 517, 517, yes, sorry, 67 feet divided by 22 and a half, 22.5.
So, that's 2.97 if we moved it back three feet, you know, if we brought this wall in three feet.
Right.
That would then be the 450 feet, which would be the half of this and the 400 of the garage.
Okay.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd be willing to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we'd be willing to do, to do that.
Okay.
And then what we could do is dimension, you know, from here, we're coming out nine feet, so we could say we'll come out six feet, you know.
Sorry, it just smells like somebody smoking in this room, and it's really distracting me.
It could be my brain going off. Or maybe it's that calc, it might have been that calculator.
I'm so used to not being around smoke anymore that it's just very distracting to me when I can smell it at all.
I agree.
It's weird. It's be coming through the vent, they did, the AC just turned on.
I think the open concept is what was really important to us, so I think we would certainly be flexible, right, to try to, you know, in the spirit of what you guys are doing, you know, we want to fall within that, right? And that's what was really kind of important to us, was a big feel inside, but, but something that was, that just fit that profile of that property, right? And so, the, that amount of livable space, I think it's, it's not like you're cutting it off of one room, you know, like, so if you were to take some space off that room, I'd be, we'd be okay with that.
Okay. Because quite honestly, if you do that, you're going to get out of the impervious surface.
That was...
Yes, that would...
You're going to limit that variance.
Well, I was, we were over impervious by 100, I thought you told me 148 square feet over. Did I not write that down correctly?
Right.
So, three feet times 22 and a half feet is 67 and a half.
67, oh.
So, we're still not there.
But doesn't, don't they get a credit for the, don't they get a credit for the pervious pavers?
Yes, the, the current plan is a revision since the project went to Spark. So, with the current proposal, the impervious... you know, in the spirit of what you guys are doing, you know, we want to fall within that, right? And that's what was really kind of important to us was a big feel inside, but a, but something that was, that just fit that profile of that property, right? And so the, that amount of livable space, I think it's, it's not like you're cutting it off of one room, you know? Like, so if you were to take some space off that room, I'd be, we'd be okay with that.
Okay. Because quite honestly, if you do that, you're going to get out of the impervious surface.
That was.
Yes, that would.
You're going to limit that variance.
Well, I was, we were over impervious by a hundred, I thought you told me a hundred and forty-eight square feet over. Did I not write that down correctly?
Right.
So three feet times twenty-two and a half feet is sixty-seven and a half.
Sixty-seven. Oh.
So we're still.
Okay.
Not there.
But does, don't they get a credit?
Cut it back, but.
Don't they get a credit for the pervious pavers?
Yes, the, the current plan is a revision since the project went to spark. So with the current proposal, the impervious surface coverage is at forty-six percent, so it's over by fifty-nine point five square feet. Oh, so then it does solid. So it goes away entirely?
Okay, so we.
Yeah.
So the revised plan, including per, in, including pervious pavers, um, brings us down to fifty-nine and a half. So with this discussion, there is potential to reduce the impervious coverage.
Correct.
Completely from our.
From the variance request.
From the variance request.
Right.
Okay. Like that.
Right. That would be gone then.
Which is, which is also pretty important to us, you know, I don't, I don't want to have a, I don't want to have water in my.
You don't want pooling, pooling water in your yard, definitely.
We talk about it as a number, but as, from a life perspective, it's, you know, it's pretty important that we, I can make that as small as possible.
Okay. I'm going to take a break then for a discussion and ask if there's anyone else who wishes to speak with us regarding this request. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm. Patsy Dresch.
If, if you could pull down the mic there so we make sure we can hear you.
I'm the next door neighbor.
Okay, and what side do you live on, ma'am?
I live on the north side.
On the north side?
The north side.
Okay.
And these are very good neighbors and they've been wonderful to, to live with, and great kids and a good dog. As, this came as a great surprise to me because I am the middle house of the three that were created eighty years ago, and they're the only one-story houses left on the block. But I think this improvement looks good, um, and I know these are very conscientious neighbors and they will do whatever you say they need to do. I do have a question about the pervious, impervious.
Mm-hmm.
My house is nine feet from their house.
Okay.
I can lie down and we can touch it. You know, that's how close the neighbors we are there. And so what we have is a concrete sidewalk there.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought that you said that was going to be bluestone or pavers there, replacing that, but what I heard you say was something else.
Yeah.
I heard you say something else entirely, that, that it was going to be on the other side of the house.
They're removing that concrete walkway entirely, ma'am, so that would be just.
I understand that, but what's going to be there? Are there going to be the blue, the pavers there?
No, we just, it'll just be.
Landscape. If they remove it and it's not pervious, then it's, that mean, then it's landscaping.
Any water that comes through here, we can pitch to the front and pitch to the back now, because we don't like, we don't need to walk through there anymore. So we can make sure any water that comes from us will go to the front and the back.
What if I need to walk through there anymore?
Well, you would have it on your property. You would have a walk on your property.
You know, for, you know, Patsy, I think we'll, uh, based on, I honestly, I would even, I know you want to use that.
Use your walk?
Yeah, I'd even be considered enough to, to make enough space so that we could allow for some sort of, uh, pavers. Because that's what I told you originally.
Yeah, that is what you told me, then that's why I'm asking.
To allow her to, um, our two gates go like this.
Yeah.
And jase.
And my walkway, she can walk on, and then she just opens her gate because she has landscape.
Okay.
Along where hers would be.
Okay.
And then you have a walkway, I think on the other side, but that would be a lot to ask.
No, we don't have a walkway on the other side. We have a, uh, there is no, there's just a short walkway. But the walkway to the back is a concrete walk that is on our side. And I didn't know it was your walk. I thought it was our walk. But anyhow, that's, neither here nor there, what surprised me was that something different was being proposed from what I thought we were talking about.
Yeah, you know, Patsy, I may have misdirected you, not, but I, I'm, uh, I have no problem putting, putting something there to make sure that you can get back there.
Well, it's certainly not my intention to make this difficult.
No, 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 you're not making it difficult.
It's going to be a great improvement.
I want you, I want you to be happy.
But I want to be very clear, because it seems to me the architects are changing their minds every few seconds here, and I, I want to be sure.
Well, I think what they were trying to do, ma'am, is, is reduce the amount of lot coverage with solid material, because that's certainly a goal, um, is to reduce the amount of lot coverage that we have.
And I like your questions. And one of the, one of the concerns in my neighborhood and in my backyard is water. And we all have water that comes.
Everywhere.
We have water that seeps. And we will have water, and we have, that, so I, then Tim and I discussed that, and he said, you know, they're doing great things to help that. But as a, as a neighbor and as a resident there, I'm always concerned about the water and the flooding in that area. So that's why it's the question I get. But I don't, that was the only question I had from your presentation.
Sure. Yeah, I'm sure we can work that out.
So then technically, there's more pervious surface? Because we now have to account for a three-foot walkway on the north side? Is that correct?
No, 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 not a walkway. I mean, you were just talking about pavers, the bluestone.
That's, that's a walkway, though.
That's a walkway.
That counts.
There you go.
How many feet are we talking about that, that, literally, to take off the back of that house? An extra foot?
What are we, for, for?
To be able to do.
For her walkway?
Let's not, let's not make the family room uninhabitable.
Well, okay, no.
To get the walkway.
No, I, I was.
No, we're not, it's not our intention.
That wasn't what we were trying to say.
At all.
Maybe it's a question about a walkway that comes with.
How about some rain barrels?
Um.
Want to just add some rain barrels? Call it a day? Good deal.
Is there, is there room on?
Is there room on your property, ma'am, for a walkway to get to where you need to get to?
I can get where I need to get to. That's not the issue. The issue was the question of, I really didn't know we were going to do that. I thought there was going to be.
Well.
I tried to walk her through it earlier, and, and I, I saw southward, right, so I, I have some of the stuff I was looking at.
Right, it's Greek.
I misled.
I guess, I guess our, our preference would be that you actually remove the walkway, but I also understand your desire to be neighborly. So. Okay. Are you, okay.
Can I ask you a question? If, if, are you thinking that they're just stepping stones?
Yes, but, you know, that really is not the issue. The issue was that I.
It's just that you understand and you're clear.
Well, there was something was said, and now it's something else.
Because I think what we.
I want to be clear, there are other things that are something else.
Like, I think what we could do is if we did, um, like, you know, sixteen by sixteen paver, you know, like bluestone.
Yeah, concrete block, yeah.
And then, you know, it's about fifty feet along that side, and if we did one.
So, I think.
And, you know, like, maybe we're looking at like thirty more feet or something of.
I think she's mostly concerned about clarity and making sure that you're not going to change the plan later. And, um, so just for, so just for that, let's, let's cover this for a second then. I think what may have happened was they maybe wanted to keep that walkway at one point in time, maybe they were going to replace it with bluestone. But when they went to the city and realized where they were on impervious surface coverage, they were trying to reduce that as much as possible. So that's why sometimes changes like this happen, um, as you kind of go through the process. One of the things that will happen as part of this process, though, is we have plans here, um, that get, um, generally speaking, in terms of their intent, if we approve any aspect of the variances, then, um, those are tied into the plans that they've submitted here, um, and there, that intent is sort of recorded as part of the record. So if there was any issue, you could certainly come back to it.
Let me just say one thing, as I think about it, I have.
If I could get you, sorry, to, can I bother you to get back up to the microphone so we can hear you?
The question is, I have had, and I've always had, a gate to my backyard.
Uh-huh.
There are two gates, one to his backyard and one to my backyard, and I've had it and have used it, and I'm used to having it. And so that was, that was the reason I was raising the question, because on the other side, there's a different kind of gate with the other neighbor.
Mr. Fallon, could you really quickly come show me where this gate is so that I understand what we're talking about?
Oh, it's on the survey?
Oh, is it on the survey? Did I miss it?
So it's right. It's right.
Oh, we don't have this survey. Hold on, can we see it?
Yeah.
It's right at the end of, uh, right here.
Okay, so you have your gate here, and where is her gate?
Literally like right next to it. And then right here is, um, landscape that she has like up against her house.
So her gate goes, her gate doesn't go, it's not this way, her gate is right here and it opens into. And it would open that way?
Yeah.
Or this way or whatever, something like that? Okay.
Then there's like a, a sort of post, right?
And then her house.
Yeah. And it goes, like I said, don't, don't take me for my drawing, Kate. But yeah, so then her place is here, right, and then this is, um, landscape. And then her house is.
Is there room to put a walkway on her side of the property line?
That would be here.
Oh, no, okay.
Yeah, yeah, if, I think what I was, what I had told her, um, oh, I know what I told her, right, was that we were going to put something that we could walk on. And I think I just misunderstood the plans, and I was thinking that ripping up concrete would be good, right? Wanted pitches, right?
Yeah.
But ripping up this concrete would be good, and if we could then replace it with, um, you know, something that I could, I guess, shovel off for her so that she can walk, this, uh, could walk and get to her gate, right? Because it is on this side, she doesn't have anything. Like, there's no way for her to get from, from.
But you have to walk on your property to get to her gate. You can't walk down her property because there's bushes in the way?
Yeah, she's got like a, um, there's a big bush here, and then this is all landscape? Is it?
I, I, I know this is kind of out of our realm, but at the same point, I feel like it needs to be a little bit resolved, just because I don't want it to get resolved in a way it shouldn't. Does that make sense?
One option would be to add stepping stones where it's not a continuous impervious surface. Stepping stones, from a zoning perspective, we don't count towards impervious surface coverage.
At all?
No.
That's what I was thinking that we were talking about was.
That's an interesting loophole.
I thought that's what you were talking about.
Yeah.
That we would have stepping stones, but I, I never thought that my, my entrance to the back would be obliterated by this plan. And that's why I'm raising the question. I'm perfectly happy with stepping stones, uh, but I would like to have my gate to go into my backyard on my, on that side.
Here's what I, here's what I propose.
Stepping stones.
We have some stepping stones, and then right in front of our two gates is two that are side by side so that I can shovel it for her, so that she can open this up. And then that way, we'll always be able to get over there just in case.
Okay.
Does that work?
Okay. Works for me.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Now that we've taken care of that, we are back to having no impervious surface variance.
Because stepping stones don't count towards impervious surface.
And a, um, and a discussion that involved, at least at some point.
A three-foot reduction.
A three-foot reduction to the rear addition with the, uh, applicable reduction in building lot coverage that would go along with that.
There was also talk of a foot reduction in the front yard, in the front porch. Just to pick up a couple extra square feet.
Does that get us anywhere if the roof line is the same?
Oh, if your roof lot, if your roof coverage is the same?
That actually help you then to push back the?
Technically, no.
Okay.
But it helps me when they want to try and enclose it in the future.
Definitely not enclosed.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're putting a, like, we're outdoorsy type, we're putting a swing there, like a seat type thing.
I know you're not enclosing it in the future.
That's not wor- Mary Beth's not worried about him. She's worried about the next guy.
That's correct.
That's true.
Worried about three owners from now.
Half joking, I mean, that's the whole reason why we, we, we look at this as our forever house.
Mary Beth is worried about a hundred and fifty years from now.
I take the long view.
Well, in that case.
It's the enclosed porches on the nineteen oh-five houses that she's upset about, so.
They've already got their enclosed porch, though. I'm sure that was a front porch at some point.
I'm sure it was.
Yeah.
Oh, this other thing on the left?
Yeah.
Yeah. The sunroom.
That's enclosed.
That is, that you, that is your previous porch.
Exactly.
In her, right? Okay. Um. Okay. That is done. But that doesn't impact the actual variance request then? It doesn't seem like.
Really nice sunroom, though.
All right. One other variance on the table, which is the two point nine feet, to the north side, I believe, for the second floor addition in line with the first floor structure.
But I'm, I guess I'm, I'm, you guys helped me out with this. I'm a little bit confused. The actual addition is going to be compliant, correct?
Correct.
So we're only, we only need to give the variance for the rebuild of the existing footprint that's non-conformity.
Well, it's not really a rebuild. It's the addition of the second floor.
I see. Okay.
I mean, because there's not a second floor now, so the addition of the second floor in line.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Right, which is what we usually agree to until it becomes a giant wall.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And in fact, they're decreasing the degree of non-conformity by taking the brick off, so it's actually a three-foot-one side yard setback rather than a two-foot-nine.
Any other discussion then? Anything else from you guys? No? Anyway, I will note that there's nobody else in the room for public comment. And therefore, I think we are prepared to close the record and begin our deliberations. Anything further? Just find my standard sheet. Okay, we're going to run through the standards with the consideration based on the alterations, the discussed alterations to come to a minimum change necessary. And as a result of that, we are removing the impervious surface coverage request from the consideration and minimizing the building lot coverage request. And with that said, we'll run through the seven standards for major variations. First being that the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of the adjoining properties. We've had the most impacted neighbor here in support of the project. The majority of the, uh, variation is with respect to a two-car garage, which will bring the, bring the property in conformance with the parking requirements for the district, and the improvement of the front porch and its, um, and its improvement to the streetscape and, and the livability along the street side of the property. So I believe this standard has been met. The requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. We spoke about that earlier as we were kind of going through, that certainly having two parking spaces off-street is the intent of the zoning ordinance. And improving, uh, the sort of eyes-on-the-street and neighborhood effect of, of the front porch, of front porches is also an aspect of the zoning ordinance and one of the reasons that the bonuses are provided. And furthermore, um, that it is within the intent of the zoning ordinance to both modernize and improve properties. And within that, we have to consider the existing structure, um, that we are, that we are working with, uh, with respect to the second floor, et cetera. Step number three, their alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property, as was noted by, uh, the applicant. This is, uh, a smaller property in the area and for the district, and therefore, we are trying to provide, uh, the square footage for some of these, uh. for some of these more basic aspects of the parking and, and the porch area. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Step number four, the property owner would suffer particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from your inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. As the architect mentioned, the current footprint of the house with the very small garage, which is difficult to, to get one car in, is already just under the allowable lot coverage. So therefore, the owner would not be able to provide the two off-street parking spaces or the improvements to the rest of the structure without any, without any relief from this board. Step number five, the purpose of variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. The owner has stated that they intend to live in the property for a considerable amount of time, and that they are improving the property for that purpose. So it is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. Step number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The current consideration is with respect to the lot size of the existing property, and that relationship was not created by the current owner. Step number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals issues its decision. And there's been quite a bit of discussion on this matter, and what aspects of the plan do meet the hardship and minimum change necessary requirements. And through that discussion, I believe we have reached a determination of, of what that is. And therefore, the revised proposal will meet this standard as well. Seeing that we've heard testimony and had deliberation and run through the standards, is there a motion with respect to this case? Do you know all the parts?
My, my only question was about what are we doing on, are we specifying something on lot coverage?
We're saying that it is...
Or just in the discussions that we've had, or does anybody think we need to put a number to it?
I think, I think staff can put a number to it, but for our purposes, we're saying that the, it's represented based on the information provided less the three feet to the addition. So that's how I think we should clarify it, instead of coming up with a percentage.
Okay. In the matters EBA 13ZMJV 0057 regarding 2335 Hartry Avenue, I would recommend that, or I'd make a motion that we approve the two requested variations pertaining to the side yard setback and building lot coverage, provided that the building lot coverage be in keeping with the discussion that we have had here this evening, and the construction of the second-story addition be within the existing footprint. Also would recommend that pervious pavers be used wherever possible in order to reduce the, even though the impervious surface is not something that we're going to have to really deal with at this point, it sounds like this area does have some water issues maybe, so anything that can be done to lessen those. And that the construction and project be within the guidelines that have been discussed through testimony and through existing paperwork presented this evening.
Can I make a friendly, oh, am I on? Can I make a friendly amendment that, when you said the second-story addition be contained within the existing footprint, that that's not actually accurate? The existing footprint is going to be expanded?
No, they're changing it. They're changing the second floor to be limited to the existing footprint.
Oh, the second, right, sorry. I got confused. I got confused with first floor and second floor. Thank you, never mind.
No friendly amendment.
No friendly amendment.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay. It's been, the motion has been made, and second amendment. And if there's nothing further, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried unanimously, so good luck with your project.
Hey, Lori, do you need to take those documents as exhibits?
And the only thing I'm nervous about is that one...
It shows the revised second-floor plan.
Yeah. The one that I don't have is that revised second-floor plan. Can you get that, can you get that, just a copy of the revised, of that other second floor we looked at to staff?
Why don't we revise the, we'll revise the first-floor plan too, to pull it back to three feet and the second floor?
Well, we don't, for the record of the testimony, we don't need that. That's...
Oh, you don't?
No.
So you just need the second floor?
We, what we, and it would be helpful to, if, let's put it, let me stop for a second. It would be helpful to the zoning office, actually, if you revised it based on our discussion. And actually, Melissa could review that and make sure it's set, so that way when you guys come in for building permit, it'll make it more efficient probably when you come to building permit, if you get that to the zoning office sooner than later.
Sure, we can do that.
So I would just give you that advice. And then, but what we do need for their record officially in terms of the public hearing that we've just had, is that second-floor plan that you showed us that we don't have in our packet. So if you could get them a copy...
You can email that directly to me.
Okay.
So if you could get her that, then we can include that in their official record of the public hearing.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Did you wish them luck with their project?
I did. I did. And if, is there enough, is there anything else, Melissa, before we close our meeting?
Just a reminder that we have a special joint meeting with the Plan Commission next Wednesday at 7:00 PM in this room, followed by the week after with our regular, regularly scheduled zoning, zoning board meeting on July 16th.
Great. We'll see you all then. Our meeting is adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate it.